I see and propose none as far as the time wise goes. Um, I will have my interest in seeing if we can get the principals out, you know, as soon as we can. So, is there any changes or additions to the agenda at this time?
Nope.
Nope. So, we will begin with visitors and staff to be heard. Um, we'll do that one at a time. We'll go through an orderly process.
(laughing).
Okay, and um, why don't we go and, Daniel, I'll ask you to um, introduce yourself a little bit to the board. We've, we've had some material, but um, always interested in understanding uh, how somebody, you know, sees the board and sees their role in it and what, what interests you with uh, the high school and the Center for Technology.
Yeah, of course. So, uh, I, as I noticed on the, a few weeks ago that there, I was very surprised. No one had actually run for the open seat from Essex Junction, so given that the, the high school and the CT are kind of gems of our community, I wanted to make sure uh, that the village has some representation. I'm formerly a high school teacher, uh, myself, so I have some experience uh, in the craft. I, I taught Spanish for two years at a public high school in Durham, North Carolina. Moved to Puerto Rico, uh, where I taught uh, high school English, uh, for three more years and was head of the English department there. Uh, so as I saw that opportunity and uh, my family and I, we just recently are about to close on a house in the village, so plan on staying here for, for quite some time and uh, thought it'd be an excellent opportunity to serve and kind of look forward to learning from you all on board and, and hearing more about kind of the wonderful things that our, our schools are up to and to help support that.
Fantastic, fantastic. Um, you'll, as it works out, um, you've taken the oath of office, so you're a full member of the board. You'll be that until April of next year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and at that time, you'll be able to run for the um, the perpetual position uh, for as long as you'd like to. But that's great.
Welcome.
Yeah, we really appreciate your service to the community, very much so. With that, we move on to our visitor guest.
Okay.
And um, I believe you have a presentation here.
Yes.
Um, and you can...
Okay, I'll just, I'll do this a little bit. Can I do that?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So, first of all, thank you very much for um, for having me. It's really a pleasure to be here. Um, especially since so many people in our school community have been a really big part of VIA, really big part of virtual intercultural avenues. So, it's, it's um, it's especially meaningful for me to be here. So, uh, the first thing I wanted to bring up was a quote by Arnie Duncan, um, who presented a global challenge in saying that technology alone isn't going to improve student achievement and that the best combination is teachers working with technology to engage students in the pursuit of learning they need. And at this quote really spoke to me because I have, with virtual intercultural avenues, I have definitely tried to marry pedagogy and technology. Um, one of the first things we did, um, when we were beginning VIA, uh, getting everything started was to create, um, we, we actually commissioned a, a local Vermont filmmaker and documentarist who's also done some filmmaking for the US Department of Justice, and that was Derek Holquist. And he came, kind of took over the school, uh, one spring day and we created this uh, little film to basically explain VIA and get a wide range of audiences, uh, excited about it around the world. So, I'm just going to share that with you. In the past, students' education was limited to the classroom and chocolate and textbook. Whereas now, students are lucky enough with iPads, iPhones and smartphones and Skype. There's incredible possibilities for community engagement. Very, very good. Virtual intercultural avenues is a tool for teachers and students to improve their effectiveness in the acquisition of foreign languages and cultural knowledge. All while using the technology capabilities that we have at our disposal in the 21st century. American students learning French and other languages and French students learning English can meet through this virtual campus, this virtual uh, intercultural exchange. Students can access online learning, social media, interactive, immersive games, all within one site. So, it's, it's very organized, it's structured and much more learning can take place. This is a, a way for teachers to connect as well. We can have video conference, uh, before class. Teachers can discuss a lesson plan that both of their classes on both sides of the Atlantic will be using. The virtual intercultural avenues is an opportunity for students to have mobility within the world, to have a global experience within their, their high school years. This is a way of connecting not just around learning a foreign language, but connecting with other kids, making friends and talking about movies. The answer was High School Musical. She wanted to know if it was just like High School Musical. Students who are their age, see them face to face. It's, it's not just an experience of learning a foreign language. It's a life experience, meaning skills of working with other cultures and having a global understanding. So, this is, this was really fun to do this film. Um, and this is only just at the beginning of the thanks that, that I owe to this community because it's been really a lot of, a lot of people have, a lot of, there's been a lot of effort and time and support that's gone into VIA, the creation of VIA. So, I would say that since the inception of the project, we've really stayed true to the mission, which is to leverage technology enablers and virtual environments to support K-12 learner and teacher effectiveness related to the acquisition of both foreign language skills and cultural knowledge. And I would say that at this point, the, our missions, our mission is broad enough that we can expand to other disciplines and other languages, um, and, and even beyond K-12, K-16. So, um, I mean, one of the, one of the com, I've talked a lot about technology, but uh, it, it really has begun with a, with personal and professional outreach. So, these are some of the organizations that, um, have helped to support VIA and have really contributed to even the development of, of the concept. So, I've visited the, the US Department of Ed, their, their Office of International Affairs, the Office of International Tech, of Educational Technology. Um, I, in the side of the European Union, I visited the European Commission in Brussels, where we talked about an EU program that is, um, EU-wide, uh, you know, something akin to, that might exist for the US, although we don't, we don't have something quite similar except for this. Um, I, I met with the EU delegation to the United States in Washington DC. Um, that was a really incredible experience as well. I met with cultural attachés and cultural counselors who wanted to hear about VIA and how we could connect with their countries as well. Um, the French Ministry of Education is aware of what we're working on. Um, they are making our partnership with a couple of the schools in France official, um, with a government stamp, even though our relationships are continuing without their official recognition, but it's all in the works. The paperwork is, is all been, um, completed. Um, and the embassies, uh, in addition, have been extremely helpful in connecting us with schools. And most recently, the Embassy of Spain connected us with three schools in Madrid and uh, they've been fabulous. So, that's some of the outreach that, that has gone on. Um, you'll notice, um, I, I don't mean it to be last on the list, but the Vermont Agency of Education as well has been, um, instrumental in contributing to, um, you know, important components for technology for how to help us get connected. So, this sort of represents the, the connections in the world and how it's begun. We, I, we started in Brussels, well, we started in Essex and then Brussels and then Lille and then Nantes. And then we added San, San Diego, High Tech High International, and then Madrid is the most recent. So, it's been growing and um, uh, next time I'll have a graphic where they, they pop up one by one. Um, these are some of the teachers in Belgium and in Nantes whom I visited. Um, the, this teacher, Anik Faitings, came, visited here and other of the teachers have, have visited here as well when we had a, a teacher delegation visit two times. One last May and one last October. Uh, these are a couple of the schools that we, that I was working with and establishing a relationship with. Uh, Diderot is in Nantes, which is in the south of France, very close to the Spanish border. And Lycée Fennelon is in the very north of, of France. So, the, um, I wanted to share this with you about what kind of, um, you know, we talked about the world reach and some of the government and business organizations that we've worked with, but this is all, some of the local reach. Um, the French students who came here, we involved, you know, more than 350 students, um, from Essex High School EMS and ADL to be involved in the French exchange because the Lille students visited us in October. Um, we've had, we have more than 300 French language students here alone involved with VIA. Um, and you can see by the numbers that it's all quite, uh, it's, it's all quite substantial. We involved, we, we've been involving as many people as possible, uh, in the community. So, even families, for example, some of our students hosted students from Lille and they had sisters and brothers at ADL, so the kids from ADL were involved. We visited ADL and had several assemblies with their students. So, we've just been trying to reach out to the extent possible. Even our excursions in Vermont itself were, um, were strategic. We really showed, uh, the students kind of the best of Vermont and the teachers as well. Um, we talked, uh, 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 some of our socially responsible businesses, um, made, we made sure to, um, to, to take part in. They were thrilled with Burton Snowboards, um, you know, even, and, and uh, even the Ethan Allen Museum, which, um, you know, is a little, a little, a little dry. But, um, and it's very small, but it was wonderful. They opened up specially for us. They opened up specially for forty, forty-plus students to, to visit. And it's fascinating. They even had a special talk about the French and, early French and English settlers, so. Um, again, last but not least was, you know, the, the people at EHS, just at EHS alone, who were extremely helpful in helping get, get everything off the ground. I mean, literally the whole school community was involved in helping, helping make everything happen. Um, so, that was kind of a local, local reach. Back to a global view. Um, these are some of the components of VIA and our reach. So, we have a Vimeo, uh, we have Vimeo, uh, albums on our portal and there have been more than 2,700 views of our, of our movies that have been made and produ, uh, produced and shared by students. We, the blogger itself is called VIA Conversations and has had more than 19,000 views. Um, that's how many students are involved throughout the world. We've got 29 teachers. I was literally counting it up today, you know. Uh, some, there's some ebb and flow and, and that's how many are involved now, which is fabulous. And the number of schools that are involved and the number of cities that are involved. Uh, this is a snapshot of, of the portal itself, of the VIA portal. Um, and you can kind of get the background of the portal and then some of the components of the portal on the bottom, bottom right. Some of the ways that the students are communicating with one another. Um, we have a Twitter feed, very active Twitter feed. We have a very active Instagram account. Um, this is, was, uh, one little factor about VIA is that, um, a lot of this is, um, VIA has developed with the input of other teachers and students and, and others in the educational community. Like, wouldn't it be great if we had this? So, when the French students were coming to visit us, it was my, a couple of my students who said, "Well, it really needs to be Instagram because we're not using Twitter so much." So, we, we started an Instagram account. I actually gave my password to the, one of the students so that she can post, uh, during the trip. Um, so we post quite a lot, um, and uh, the kids, um, they like the pictures and it's a way of constantly communicating. Um, here's, here's a snapshot of the Vimeo, um, our Vimeo albums. Um, a date you'll see at the top left, A Day in the Life, Faith. One of my students who produced a little video in French. At the tail end of it, I thought, "Oh, how wonderful that she's playing Edith Piaf, um, singing La Vie en Rose." And uh, then I realized it was Faith singing and uh, it's, it was incredible. So, I, I, I feel like I'm discovering talent from these videos. Um, the Belgians in the upper right did a, uh, they did a spoof, a, a little commercial spoof. And what we do is we produce videos and then we imitate one, we imitate one another and we produce the same kind of content. Um, so some of the kids are funny, some are serious, but they're all, all quite good. Your, your two sons started, um, they set the bar high because they were very funny. They were very funny early on. They, they set...
I can't believe that.
They, they're very funny.
That's worn off.
They make themselves disappear, you know. They said, "Un, deux, trois," snapped their fingers and then they, poof, they were in another place in the school. It was really cute. Um, so we can see the videos. This is just, uh, this is a more recent snapshot. We actually went to the, um, to the film production room here in, in the library and filmed, um, the students doing introductions, first in the tar, in English and then in the target language. So, they did them in French and Spanish. They had to be memorized and they, we, we had the whole, you know, we had the boom, we had lights, we had the camera and we're gonna, we'll be sharing that. We haven't shared it yet, but we'll be sharing that with the, the European students. Um, they really rose to the occasion and took it very seriously and they had seen something similar of the Spanish students and loved it, so we did the same. This is a picture of the blog. This is the, the blog that, um, we have over 19,000 views of. This was one of the prompts, "What's on your bucket list?" And it was in three languages and the students, um, the t, we have a little message for teachers at the top and the students have to follow those directions, which is some write in English and some write in the, our target language, Spanish or French. And uh, curiously, um, students worldwide would like to parachute and paraglide. They, they had talked about that, all of that, every language talked about that being on the bucket list. Um, again, some, some statistics about VIA. Um, these are some of the page views and interactions per prompt. Um, it's been growing exponentially, I would say, since day one and this is, um, I think it will continue to grow. Um, these prompts are, are provided by teachers, students, um, someone in passing, not even my own students, will sometimes provide a, provide a prompt. One of the features of VIA is Scopia. Scopia is a virtual classroom. So, you download Scopia on your computer and it takes about 20 seconds. And then you enter your name and a number, a room number, and you all enter that room and you're all there at the same time. And this is an example of that. Um, this was in a class, uh, last fall. That class happened to be in Brussels. Um, and the kids really enjoy that a lot. They enjoy that very thoroughly. Uh, here's, you, you might recognize this person, uh, who met Rob, Beth, Kate and Amélie from France when they came for the, um, our, uh, reception last fall. And Judy, you were there too. Um, here were some of our student ambassadors. Um, you probably recognize some of them as well. Oh, yeah, I guess you're done. Yeah. Um, let's see, now these, uh, um, this, this gal hosted this girl, Moni, and Emily hosted Manon and, um, um, Ambakie Amory was the student ambassador for, um, for Annabelle. And Annabelle is, uh, if you're soccer fans, is Raphael Varvan's sister. You know who that is?
Yeah.
I didn't know. I had to look it up, but once I looked it up, I found out how impressive that was. Clémence and, and James at the top and then the, the, uh, the ADL girls at the, in the top right. Um, they were very pleased to be involved. Um, next steps. So, the most recent school additions were the two schools, uh, IES stands for, is, is kind of Spanish for high school in, in Madrid. They're actually bilingual schools. And Instituto is from seventh grade to 12th grade. So, that's very interesting because we also are involving our middle schools. Um, ADL and Otter Valley Union High School teachers are joining the mix. Um, and we are also trying to cross disciplines. Um, I've actually already met with a couple of the teachers at ADL. They really want to get started and, um, I was thrilled with their ideas. Um, in October, the Belgians are coming to Essex and I think it's about 20 or 25 students. And in March, the Essex students are going to Lille into the north of France. And again, it'll be publicly about 20 to 25 students. Uh, Chile is still a twinkle in my eye, but I have my, I, I'm going to be contacting the embassy. I'd really like to make a contact with, um, in, in another part of the world, in South America. Um, I'm very interested in establish, setting up a global leadership program at EHS and I've talked to a lot of people about that at this point, but again, we're, it's, we're just on the cusp. And, um, another thing that's coming up is a really incredible opportunity through Rotary of Essex, who gave VIA a grant, which we in turn, uh, turned into scholarships for students. So, I know who the scholarship winners are and there will be one, two, three, four, five scholarship winners actually. And I'll probably be announcing that in the next few days. Um, so that's just really fantastic. Uh, and the, I guess last but not least is the Fourth Annual Roland Foundation Conference, which is, uh, has, um, let's see, the theme is, I jotted it down. Um, is learning without boundaries, creativity, global savvy and social responsibility. Uh, the keynote is, um, Young Zhao. So, that's going to be, um, this, this will fit right in. I will actually be one of the presenters, so that's going to be fabulous. Um, and thank you so much. I really appreciate the support and in our, from the school board, from our school community, from Rob has been just incredibly supportive. Judy has been incredibly supportive and I, and even, even in our central office, there's a lot of people who have been helping VIA, you know, behind the scenes, helping things happen, helping make things happen, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I would just imagine that the trips that the students make, uh, once they see the culture, once you're actually there, it's a huge impact. It, I mean, you can do only so much with the virtual, but those trips are really important to open.
It's true. The ground, the, you know, the ground exchange does, it, it's natural for the ground exchange to evolve out of the virtual exchange. But the virtual exchange really engages them in a place where they are, in a place that's very attractive and appealing to the students and is sustainable as well. And then if the ground exchange can happen, then I think we go for it, but...
It's a plus.
Yeah, it's a plus. Right, right. And they are making lifelong, um, I mean, they're doing what I hope they would do in the, in the movie. You know, they, they do Snapchat one another. They do text. They do, um, uh, share Instagram photos and, and connect through even, you know, even email, Skype, FaceTime, the gamut. So, that's really fun, really fun to see that happening.
Is the interaction, uh, kind of scaffolded based upon foreign language knowledge or, or someone's level? Or how does that, how does that work?
You know, we haven't had to do that. Um, I can, I, I, I did that for one teacher who had some very advanced students and wanted some letters that were, um, some correspondence that was at a little bit higher level and not sort of introducing yourself. Um, but we haven't scaffolded, scaffolded it yet. We're, we're just engaging in the prompt, writing as much as possible and using both languages. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, you, um, you talked about how the mission statement has room to explore in it.
Mm-hmm.
And you talked a little bit about the potential of the K-16 kind of aspect.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, there's so much, so many of the colleges and universities have on-ground exchange programs, but is anything like this exists?
At the college level, um, the only program I know of that's like this is, uh, was a professor at Cornell who had, was engaging her Italian students using, uh, using Moodle with, with a colleague of hers in Italy.
Mm-hmm.
And it was on a much smaller scale than this, actually. Um, I saw her presented a conference. This is really, I, I mean, humility aside, this is, this is cutting edge for, it's not just cutting edge for Essex. It's cutting edge for Vermont. It's really just cutting edge. You know, it's really, it's really different.
Yeah.
It's, um, really changing the way we're grabbing the students and, and helping them sustain their interest in language and their love of culture. Uh, I have little nuggets of, of, um, little vignettes that I, I share with Rob quite frequently and they're all very poignant and sweet and wonderful and exactly what I wanted to have happen, so.
What's really, uh, refreshing to observe is the, the genuine enthusiasm and energy, whether it's the adults getting together or the students getting together. And in particular with the students, as Al was alluding to, they end up learning about the language that they don't even know they're learning about the language because they're just conversing.
Right.
And it's, it's very impressive, very impressive.
And your energy and enthusiasm is impressive also. It's, it's, it takes that to, we all know, to make a program like this work and so thank you so much. It's really, really exciting.
It's very rewarding for me. It's really, it's actually pretty thrilling to have something like this happen.
I can tell and that's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, I will go back to your agenda. Want to?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Fantastic.
And I didn't spill water when I keyed in.
It was great to see so many photos of the Donnies and here, but our one. So, um, next on our agenda is, uh, by way of update on the Appreciative Inquiry Summit um, and the, the work of the core planning team. So, we, um, let me, let me start with, um, kind of just a, a sketch of background and, um, and then kind of end it with what the coming attractions are. So, the, the school board, uh, some year and a half ago, um, began looking primarily through the budget lens at a number of issues that it needed to address in a long-term basis. Uh, facility-wise, um, continuing to understand the, the evolution and the pace of change in education, what we needed to do with, um, student-centered program design. Uh, continuing to try to better understand how to work with having two of the very best institutions of the state underneath one roof, uh, with Essex High School and the Center for Technology and how that can continue to create synergy and opportunity. Um, and as well as, uh, mounting concerns with sustainability and community engagement. So, all those things swirling, the board took on, uh, a training exercise to better understand the how. How do we go about asking these questions, generating this information? Um, working with an appreciative inquiry consultant and going through a process of training for a year and going into a sort of a sandbox approach of trying that with our front entrance. And I think we walked away pretty impressed on how it harnish, how it harnessed, um, passion, interests in a positive, constructive way and gave some design direction through, through that. We decided to scale that up and now there's been a team working for the... We decided to scale that up, and now there's been a team working for the last eight months or so, both an advisory team and a core planning team. This core planning team is constituents and stakeholders across the community. We originally had invited well over, probably a hundred people. Got down to a group of about thirty-five. Held a pretty constant twenty or so throughout the process, to design a two-day summit. And that will be taking place on June 24th and 25th. It will start at 8:00 a.m. on the 24th and run until 3:30. And then, again, on the 24th, it will convene at 1:00 p.m. and run to around dinnertime, 6:30, 7 o'clock. And during that time, we anticipate bringing together hundreds of our community members, and having a very active conversation about their values, their dreams, their desires, of what they would like to see happen at the Essex Community Educational Center. Now and into the future, so that it can result in a strategic plan, a multi-year vision for bringing our education, our facilities, our program, our governance into, sort of into our future and to the next level. So that is the work that's underway. We had a great session on the 14th, right? That was the, that was the last week? That was this month, last week? Yes. That, it was a real work session. We had everything from planning down to the smallest detail of what we need for the event. I believe the code name for that work group is Party City USA.
That works.
Yep. And then there's also a work group that is working to make sure that the word gets out. We should be seeing probably soon a postcard hitting every resident of Essex Town and Essex Junction, with a save the date for June 24th and 25th. And then we'll be going out with some private invitations to make sure that people know about it, and know how important we see their participation in it. So, that is the appreciative inquiry. Did I leave anything out?
Cards landed today at my house, they look great.
Oh, you got one today? Oh, good. Yeah, they were, I haven't seen it yet. And C T has been so wonderful working with us. So thank you to your staff, who have been fantastic, lots of back and forth, and so, so easy to work with, so thank you. And flyers, and you'll see around town, we've printed another, an additional stack of postcards and flyers that we're going to post around businesses, and continue our outreach that way. So thanks, C T.
I think that this is, you know, my, my work has been on the workbook that we'll be going through, as has other people. And going through that, I can really get the sense of just how dynamic and involving and energizing the day is, just from sort of extrapolating from the experience we had in May, in which we asked some, we did some interviews, and we did some questions, and then we did some sort of prioritizing. I can see this being really super exciting to go through it. The appreciative inquiry lens, I think, particularly works in an organization like ours, where so many people are deeply passionate, and that if you fall into a deficit lens, you can't help but sort of create casualties in that deficit view, where we know that everybody is working because they believe in what they do. So now it's about making sure that we bring our strengths to the table every day and into the future. So, it's really exciting.
So I would just add one thing, if it's okay. That we have a document that I would love to share with all board members that are shared with the team already, which is just a list of people who we would really like to make a special outreach effort. It's a Google Doc. If I share it with you, if you just add your name and an email address and your name, it's going to be, it's very simple to follow what we're asking of you. But if there's anyone you think who needs a special outreach, please feel free to add that to our document. I'll share that with you right now, so that you can contribute to that list, and make sure anyone you think needs to be in that room gets a special invitation. If that's okay with you, I'll share that with you right now. Great, thank you so much.
I'm assuming you have the postcard and an email format?
We have the postcard in an email format, and we have a flyer also formatted, so however...
You could send that to me, that would be great, because I have a bunch of people that...
Absolutely. And, sure, I'll do that.
I'm gonna, if there's no questions about that, or certainly do any, have you had any exposure to appreciative inquiry?
Yeah, so I work for Curie Green Mountain, and so back in our former days, when we were Green Mountain Coffee Roasters, AI was a big, actually, part of our, our culture. We used to do it quite a bit. Bob Stiller, our company founder, was a big believer in appreciative inquiry. So a lot of our company meetings were facilitated that way. And they actually brought in an artist who would kind of capture all of people's input, kind of in graphic form. So at the end of the day, you'd have a big mural, basically, hand-drawn, and you could kind of reflect on the process. It was very, it was very fun, it was very exciting, so it's great to hear we're doing that.
Yeah, we're hoping for one of those artists as well. I'd be dying to see one of those, just for the whole... So we'll move into principals' reports, and I'll ask Rob to start us off.
Okay, thanks. First of all, something I don't think that made it in the report, just as an FYI, we have a benefit piano recital this Friday night, seven to eight, in the auditorium, by Essex High School seniors Teddy Ninn and Matt Wu. And I've had the pleasure to hear them play throughout their time here. And it's, they're outstanding, so that's free. It's going to be in the report, or everyone in the community is invited. And it should be, should be a good hour, I would say.
Who are they benefiting?
Just as a thank you to the community.
Nice.
Yep. Two really fine young men. I've referenced Matt in some of my reports, as his outstanding accomplishments so far, while he's here. Comment on out front? I was going to have a schematic, but they got ahead of me, and it's already there. In terms of in front, having some beds for the botany class to put flowers in, so the students can further reclaim the front. If you've been in school in the morning, a nice morning like today, or during lunch or after school, I mean, now that everything is opened up, shall we say, and benches are balanced, the kids are loving the front. It's outstanding, they're enjoying it, and they can't wait now. The dirt was put in the flower, or the beds today, so that the students should be planning soon for, to further spruce up the front. There was talk of some art, some fine arts, students going out front. I don't think that's going to happen this year, just based on where we are and with the end of the year coming up, but there are plans to further embellish from a student art perspective out front, so...
I just wanted to mention that I drove by on Saturday, and with basketball here, the gym is quite busy. There's members of all, all communities, is probably as far south as Rutland, and as far north as Newport. And they were here, and the front was packed. You know, people enjoying the landscaping, enjoying sitting there. So that's also part of our community engagement aspect of the other hours and months and weeks that the school plays host.
Yep. Definitely good stuff. In terms of specific updates, we continue to work faculty and staff in terms of moving to proficiency or standards-based grading for our students. And we had a second faculty meeting today, and each faculty member received this book, which will help everyone move forward in terms of separating behaviors from the grading practices. And they will be recorded and calibrated with a rubric, but also to focus in on content, area, knowledge, and standard acquisition, and equally important consistency throughout the school in terms of grading. I'll be happy, if any board members would like a copy, please just let Brian know, and you can let me know, and I can, I can get you, get you a copy. Folks just took this this afternoon on their way out as a summer reading opportunity. In terms of the work at hand, I can tell you for the foreseeable future, we're going to be laser-focused on this work in combination with personal learning plans. One additional side light to note on that is Mark Floyd, our Director of Counseling, who was here at the last meeting. He's had some communication with colleges and universities, and they're getting up to speed now that all high schools, all high school students, and of course, before, grade seven as well, will have personal learning plans. And since we're using Naviance, and the colleges are well aware of that tool, they're really excited, because they would like to see if a student were to go to Middlebury, that their personal learning plan would follow them with their transcript. So that's, that's exciting to hear on the other end, that that is a desire that colleges and universities have. So that's, that's an important piece to add. So we've got the personal learning plans, proficiency-based learning. We're starting to chart out kind of an Gantt chart approach in terms of when we're going to start to consider engaging community students. Obviously, staff is well under in terms of being engaged, and how we move forward, so that it's going to be a kickoff, if you will, fall of 2016 with our freshman class that year. There is a district team that is meeting to look at various platforms to help teachers record and track growth and progress in returns, in returns to standards, and also moving towards, you know, graduation requirements, which are going to be proficiency-based, moving from the traditional Carnegie units, or perhaps a combination of, in a transition approach. We've received some good information from Noble High School in Noble, Maine, who's a little ahead of where we are in terms of proficiencies. They're about the same size school, a successful traditional high school. So we've been able to communicate with them and get some good input moving forward, so that we don't perhaps repeat some areas they wish they had done differently coming out of the gate. So that's encouraging. There's a lot of work on that front. And I guess just, in terms of the public events, I have some listed there for you. There was, there also was a STEM night of presentations, which I omitted unintentionally, that is there. I can certainly get that to you. And there will be, very soon, all the playoffs that'll be announced for the various spring sports. So it's easy to say that you could be here every night in a variety of different opportunities, whether it's athletics, internship reports, capstone reports, or various music components. The Chamber requires this Wednesday, for example. So it is a flurry of activity, really good stuff going on, to lead us to graduation on June 13th, which is seemingly way too close right now. But everything's going really well. That's what I have to report. There's a lot of positive energy, as you saw, you know, with Jill. So if you can make some of these events, or even, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, I think would be appreciated. I think you would get a lot out of it, in terms of what our students are doing and reporting out on. The community internship piece and the AVPA capstone night, it's really refreshing to the high-impact opportunities, whether it's exchange programs, whether it's a student who has spent four or five months with a business partner, out of what obviously Bob and his folks do, but to see them be very proud and report out on all the skills that they've learned, or refined, or tweaked, to help better prepare them for the next step. It's, it's good, it's a good moment. So, plenty to look for, and plenty to do in the next month. I don't have anything else to add, other than that.
Liz, any questions?
I don't have questions, I have a comment on your report, which is just to say, I was really excited to hear that the Nepalese students raised that money for the earthquake, and that that group of kids is working on that kind of outreach was really great to read. I love that.
Well, thank you. And a kind of a sub-story to that story is I meet with student government every Wednesday, our student government. And so I was, I was letting them know, right after the event occurred, that our students, our Nepal students, were really excited to do this. So a lot of our student government students joined them and helped get the word out, and helped the rest of the school community lend a hand, because our Nepali students were very, as we all would be, they were really concerned and shaken up, because they still, outside of Kathmandu, there was no communication at all. And they had no clue if their family members were alive, or what's, if they were, what state they were in. But yeah, it was a, it was a nice collective effort, everybody pulled together for that. There were some, there were some good results, and kudos to Junior ROTC for matching the amount raised with a like contribution. Eight hundred and eighty, eight dollars, eight hundred and eighty-six, and Junior ROTC matched that. So that's pretty impressive.
That's great.
Good stuff. Thanks for mentioning that.
Rob, I was just curious, what did the students do this year for the teachers? Did they, did the student government do anything for teacher appreciation this year?
They sent additional cards of thanks. That's what they chose to do this year.
The, I was just going to mention, I was listening last week, there was a lot of emergency communications traffic via amateur radio through Norway in the twenty and fifteen-meter bands. And I didn't realize we had a contingent of students here, but there were, they were handling thousands of messages coming through. Wish I'd have known, I could have included some. Okay. Just for future reference.
Yep. Thanks.
Rob, you, you kind of teased out that you might have some information, or I guess the meeting is May 18th, about the advisories? You kind of talked about some possible modification to the advisory?
So, something that's still in the works is a model that I saw in, out of a school in New Hampshire, probably four years ago, when we presented down in Massachusetts. And basically, it takes academic support time, which currently is the last twenty-plus minutes of the day, and combines that support within the school day concept with a five-day-a-week flex block model, which basically makes it more intentional. It is scheduled, as now it can be, a teacher can request, or a student can go to a teacher of choice for support, if you will. But this, this particular model, which is still in the conversation stage, what it would do is instead of, we have advisory every Wednesday from 10:40 to 11:10. This Wednesday is a senior class meeting on graduation. But what this would do is, it would keep, it would keep the Wednesday advisory, where I would meet with my twelve students. And then, at the same time period, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, students would be scheduled, using a very specific software, to any teacher or room in the building for supports, makeup work, or enrichment, depending on the situation. Or if they're in good shape, they could stay with me in advisory, and they could do work on their own. Or they could come to the library, or they could go to the gymnasium for a supervised recreation opportunity. You know, you get the idea, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be a very different and expanded model than what we currently have now. So, students and teachers from schools that we have heard present, or we have visited, I haven't heard one negative comment from either group after it's been underway. For, you know, you get the kinks out, the first, you know, three to four months, get it established. And it's a wonderful opportunity for, within the school day, for teachers to have access to kids for a multitude, multitude of reasons, depending on what they need.
And how long would it take?
Well, it's, thirty-five is what our conversation has been. In other schools, it's been anywhere from thirty to fifty minutes. That's kind of an, I mean, it's what works for the particular building. And actually, what, I think that, you know, if we get to that point where it's implemented, I think that would certainly be a conversation point and an evaluative point after the first year. Is it enough time, is it too much, you know? What would we want to do?
Interesting.
But it has a lot of potential.
Great. I appreciate that it's being thought about. It's not something that is being planned right now, it's being thought about. Or the exact details aren't confirmed yet. But I do appreciate the board being aware of it. So, thank you.
Hopefully in June, you may have more, more specific information as meetings unfold.
Yep, understood.
Yep.
Great. No other questions? We will go to Mr. Travers.
Okay. So just to highlight a few things that we're in the report and add, one thing that was not in the report... Okay. So just to highlight a few things that were in the report and add one thing that was not on the report. The action plan priorities as of May eighth were that we were hosting the, I guess the Fourth Annual Girls Can Two Event. Forty-eight young ladies showed up at the tech center from three different tech, from three different middle schools, and it was very successful. I think the thing that made it most successful for me was to hear the testimony of one of our own CTE students who, the whole day is meant to introduce young female students to the idea that non-traditional programs present a real opportunity for them in their learning and in their career plans. We hope, we host those young students with our own non-trad students from, within the programs. Some of them are from pre-tech or building trades or engineering, computer animation, web design. One of the young ladies actually said after participating, she's a sophomore here, after participating in the event, she realized that she could do a non-trad program. So moved her application from a traditional program for girls to a non-traditional program for girls. And will be starting natural resources forestry next year, which just reminded us all that we're focusing on the younger students. But there's, there's a lot of benefits to holding these kinds of events. Carolyn Dickinson is representing CTE and CCSU in New York City next month at the National School Climate Conference. She's presenting on the CTE process of engaging our student council around the results of the climate survey using appreciative inquiry model. So that's something that happened two years ago and we continue to do it. But it's nice to, it's nice to have people recognize your work. New things, CTE Corp Board met earlier today. We progress on the Taft Street Extension. May twenty-first, there's a planning commission meeting. So if you see CTE represented in that, that's about the permit process and the approval. Bids will be due on May twenty-second. And hopefully we move forward on extend, extending the Taft Street Road so we can develop five new, five new lots there. At the same time, we'll be selling nineteen Taft Street this summer. So you may see us in listings there as well. And hopefully by September, we have one of the lots developed enough so that we can put in the foundation for the next two years built. This project represents about twelve more years of curriculum planning for the building trades program.
So usually with one house is about, about two years. Okay.
Yep. And finally, results from competitions over the last two weeks for Future Farmers America and Game of Logging. Forestry students were selected second overall in the state in tree felling, something I think you want to know in your students who are cutting down trees. And they had a top-ten placement for all competitions statewide. The mechanical program, they sent a team of four down and that team took first place statewide overall. First in welding, second in welding, which makes them eligible for an FFA competition in Louisville, Kentucky. I just have to figure out whether we can get them out there or not. That test included a hundred, a hundred-question test, twenty-five-part ID practical, small-engine troubleshooting practical, welding practical, plasma cutting practical, and a costing price estimate project. So they scored first overall in the state there. That's my update.
Are there any questions for Bob?
What is the date of the CTA, the CTE?
Recognition?
Recognition night, yeah.
June tenth.
June tenth, which is a Wednesday.
What time does that start?
Seven o'clock, I believe. You have to be in your seat if you're a student by six forty.
I was just wondering if you got any feedback from student council about texts, talk, and act?
Oh, it was in, yeah, it was in my report that we were participating.
Did you hear any?
They really did enjoy it.
They did? Do you know about how many people participated?
Seven.
Great.
Not bad at all.
That's great.
The, I talked with Linda Delibas. She said that the,
Yep.
That the chatter, the conversations, the texts were engaging. The students were really interested in what was going on.
That's great.
And as you know, it, it touches all students in all schools. So it was, it was a good engagement opportunity.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Really important conversation to be having.
Our student council this year has been phenomenal. It's just been really. I didn't include it in my principal's report. We raised four hundred dollars for Nepal too. We have a large contingency of Nepalese students. And what I appreciated in them is instead of asking for donations alone, they brewed a pot of Nepali's tea and for a cup of tea you got to donate.
Oh, that's great.
It was quite delicious. And what I liked was the mix between the two groups by the end of the, because they were on different corners of state and Maine or that, that intersection. That's what I call it. Intersection by the cafeteria. And by the time the day was done, they, I think they had banded forces, which was nice to see.
That's great. Thanks for doing that.
Yep.
I just was curious, so the, this was a year in which you oversaw the S-Back testing for all your schools. So that's at least nine schools, right?
This year was eleven.
Eleven. So how did that go?
It went well. We had really good participation numbers. I believe we are done retesting. I think we missed two students and both, one of them was a waiver approved by the state and one of them was a medical reason that we're just not going to be able to get that student back in to test. The next step will be finding out how the reporting goes, what our students look like. But the beauty of that is we have the opportunity to see individual student results at the item level. So that's very, that's very exciting. And we were, we were quickly reminded this past week and into this week why we offered the S-Back since now we're dealing with our eleven schools trying to figure out how to do the kneecap science test, which is, you guys are done.
We're done.
Yeah. Thank you. So now another ten students are trying, ten schools are trying to figure out ten different ways to test their students, which expands the time out of school for those students. And confuses bussing schedules and the whole bit, so.
Death by a thousand cuts.
So hopefully, science will be added next year. But we cut our teeth. It was helpful to have Rob and his team available to us for meetings to learn what we needed to be paying attention to after they did the pilot. That was very helpful. And a lot of help from Kim Gaywar and Will Bowman was really helpful, very instrumental.
Did any other technical center do the same?
Not that I know of. Nope.
And I mean, the, the population, the concentration of having juniors in the tech center is always going to be high.
It's always going to be high, so it's always going to make sense.
So it's always going to be disruptive if you don't host it?
It's disruptive any way you do it. And the students are at, at test exhaustion at that point of the year. So, but to have the relationship with the students, to leverage that relationship, to show them that we're trying to minimize the impact and do it in a way that makes the most sense for them, provides some buy-in.
That's great. Thank you. Do you, do either of the principals want to, I guess I'm trying to expedite the, the chance for them to leave. The item is, is if on the consent agenda, if there's going to be any questions on the recommendations for professional appointments later. If we don't foresee any, I, I don't want to cut that off. We can, we'll still come to it as an agenda topic. But if we think there's a better chance than not, we can let the principals head out.
Are there three?
Are there three recommendations for professional?
Did you get Rebecca Kelly's?
Oh, that's who I'm missing. It's Anshana. Okay, we'll talk about it later. But yes, no. Yep, there's four. Okay.
Great. So we're all, we're all good. You're free to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Task team updates. So Liz, did you, do you want to, on the communications, I, I think some of it's in the org notes, but do you want to just kind of give us a twenty-second on how communications is going to be looking to potentially support the RED?
Yeah, sure. So I presented just a, a short presentation at the RED Study Committee last week about the role of the communications team in bringing that work of that committee to the community. So our idea was back in November that our communications team should, could and should focus on the work of the RED Study Committee and that it should include someone from the town and somebody from Westford and all of CTE should be represented. We went to the committee with that idea and really just to offer our help and support in taking what the content that's going to be developed and, and at those meetings. The people who will be responsible for that content are the people who are going to be in that meeting. Our idea, and I guess it's going to be discussed and decided at tomorrow night's RED Study Committee about really, I think, firming up what is expected of our, what the roles and responsibility of our, of our committee will be moving forward. But it's my hope that we'll get some representation from the RED Study Committee to join our communications task force. And we will be responsible for taking the work of the committee and bringing it out into the community through all kinds of communication channels that, that we, that we can, can use. So that's the quick twenty-second. Tomorrow night we'll have an update on that and we'll, and we'll hopefully move forward with all of the districts, all of the schools, and the, and representation from the study committee so that we can have a message that's consistent going out into the community with all the work that's going on at that, at the committee level.
Thank you.
Sure.
Policy next meets on May twentieth. So, and that will be, on that committee is Erin and Kathy Printon are on that committee. There's some committee, I'll rework now, Daniel, that with your, with your oath-taking and official nature here. We'll rework. We have, there's basically four standing, three standing and then one visiting, but it visits often, negotiations. So we have the four committees. In addition, there's sometimes some special assignments, like the, the advisory team for the appreciative inquiry summit and so forth. But we'll add you onto those, onto some of the committees. We usually ask for people to take on two committees. And then that way you don't ever miss each other that much because we get to see each other.
Do you have a CCSU web, email address now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'll just copy that information.
Yes.
So I think that the policy, Erin and I were at the last policy meeting. So it's just going to be J, right? Working on J policies.
I think that was it because there was the one that wasn't, right? Yeah, the last one. We were all together. Yeah.
We took off a bunch of policies that were older and we, we approved the, the health insurance one to get that all up in, in compliance. And one that aligned support staff with certified staff for termination and leave of absence, that kind of stuff, so. The other, the last one is leaders at work and that met last week. Myself and Al are on that. The meeting went through to work to finalize the CCSU annual work plan. And to, there is both a formative assessment and a substantive assessment, is that right? That works on a sort of a substantive, works on an eighteen-month staggered schedule. So it's sort of a perpetual basis. The meeting, we spent a good amount of time talking about maybe as time goes on to look at some other competency measurements outside of task or goal accomplishment. But no action will be taken on that right now. So, and that, that, that committee in particular has a primary role of the supervision or evaluation of the superintendent, which is done by the CCSU board, not this board. You're freshly off of orientation, so you know all this stuff. So you can explain, you can explain it to the rest of us at this point.
He actually commented that board orientation is very helpful that we designed last year.
Oh, very nice.
That was good to know.
Very nice. Anything else with task teams? It wasn't highlighted. I do want to go back. It was in the board report and highlighted a few times. But the, Erin brought up the teacher appreciation week. And I just want to again thank Erin for her leadership in the board's role in recognizing our amazing staff and teachers here at both CTE and EHS with some goodie baskets that were coordinated there, so.
I just have one question, Brad. Did you establish or did the board establish a planning day?
At our last meeting, we talked about doing it in September because we don't have a regular board meeting. The, the reason why I hedge on that is because as we were talking the other day at the core planning team, we started to talk about the then-what question coming out of the summit. And as we thought about that, mapping out that September might be a really good time to show a draft of the work that comes through the summer so that then in November, we can show sort of a final and have a final going into budget, which I think makes a lot of sense. And I also think that a September planning date makes a lot of sense. Unfortunately, there, I've, I think we've got to sort of figure how they, how, how we do it. I wasn't going to try to jam it, jam it into June. It just felt like, for me personally, June is.
I've got a three-week conflict there.
Yeah.
And I'm out of town, even though the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth will be in Rochester.
So June just seemed to be, I think there'll be probably three RED meetings in June. There's the committee meetings, the carousel meeting, graduation.
And the summit.
And the summit. So.
By the way.
So we'll look, we'll look back at September and see how we can make it all work.
Do you think that doing it in, say, July would be good because it would be really, the summit would be really fresh and we could do like kind of a download? Or is that?
No, that might be great. That might work. I think that a lot of our, a lot of our action planning as a board is going to be developed through the summit. I think there's some board development that's always good to do. I think there's some board calibration, sort of where are we, how are we doing with all this? How's our governance? How do we want to change things, make things? Now, I did state at the reorg that I would like to figure out a way that we can be more stakeholder-friendly. Six o'clock on a Monday is not always the best time to, you know, tap into our stakeholders. It's a tough time for staff to stay until six o'clock to speak with us. It's a tough time for parents. It's a tough time for taxpayers. So I think we've got a couple of subjects there. Let's keep wrestling with it.
So if we, if the RED decides to combine and all that, what was the timeframe for this board being phased out of existence?
If it continues on the timeline that was originally drafted, it would be July first, twenty-seventeen.
Okay, so we would still have time to really get the old visioning thing together and at least leave that in the future.
Right. And I, and I've wrestled with it a few times and feel like it's important, it's relevant, and whomever is the governing body is going to want to know how to take these two great institutions into the future.
I think it would really be, not to sound like, you know, but it would be a great thing for this board to leave the next, I think it would be a great legacy to leave the next governing body, whatever it looks like, you know?
I think there's going to be so many things to focus on by that next board that it's, it's presumable it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be malice on their part. It wouldn't be deficient, but.
It would just be hard.
They could, yeah, it could be hard, which means it could be another three to four years. And now we're talking, you know, past twenty-twenty and this building's just older.
Yeah.
Program design is still struggling, you know, all that kind of stuff, so. I think it's good timing.
Mm-hmm. I do. I do too.
Good. Good, good. Good, good, good conversation there. So, consent agenda, is there anyone that would like something removed from the consent agenda?
Track resurfacing.
Okay. We'll pull the, pull that out.
You wanna pull that?
Please, yes.
Anything else? So, Liz, you know the deal here.
I do.
I can, I'd be happy to present a motion, you can present it, you know, that, we just have to be fairly detailed here, so however you wanna work in capturing it.
I can present the motion if you want. If I just pull it up there, just let me get the, yeah, okay. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the warrants, the approval of meeting minutes from April twenty-eighth, 2015, the recommendations for professional appointment for Ann Shaughnessy, Benjamin Drew, Megan Davidson, and Rebecca Kelly, the approval of the budget transfer.
Hey Liz?
Yep?
Sorry to interrupt you, but-
Sure.
Part of my, I think I'm, I wanna pull the approved donation too, 'cause what I wanna ask has to do with both, so, sorry.
Okay.
So, can, I guess we're skipping over the approved donation.
Okay, so we're up to the approval of the budget transfer and the approval of the leave of absence request, or both donations or just the-
I just wanna talk about the first donation, so, yeah.
Okay, so approval of the donation of the, that CTE, of the CTE grant that was received from the Lenthelak Foundation and the approval of leave of absence request from Jennifer Luck for the 2015-16 year. Do I need to repeat that? That's all in there? Okay, great.
Can I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, as it's consent agenda, there's no discussion, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously.
So, let's take them up as they came. So, we have the approval of the track resurfacing bid. The recommendation was to award it to Cape and Island Tennis and Track for one hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred. There was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside in the capital plan to do the work. The remainder would come from other portions and parts.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to see if everybody was comfortable with the recommendation that we scale back the bathroom renovations to have the track bid go up by that much? I, I kinda thought that we've talked about those bathroom renovations being really needed and something important to the school climate and something that is more applicable to the, the entire school as a whole. So, I'm not so crazy about the recommendation, but I certainly understand that the, 'cause I just feel like we've talked about the bathrooms many times and, and how impactful they are in the community as a whole. So, then my second part of this, which I'm obviously not an accountant, so I'm probably asking a really crazy number question, but I also think it's extremely amazing and something to highlight that our high school's STEM Academy was a Vermont State winner and they won over twenty thousand dollars' worth of equipment.
Yeah.
So, my question here is, wow, that's a lot of equipment. Was any of that something that we had budgeted to be replacing because obviously we don't need to now? And would that be money that could offset this overage? Now, I know that that's probably called creative accounting, uh-huh, but, but I, that's just a question I had. So, I guess just to sum it up, I'm not in favor of scaling back on the bathroom renovations. I'd like those to move forward as planned and budgeted. And then, wow, that's really cool that we won twenty thousand dollars' worth of equipment. So, can we see a savings because of that? So, those are my two questions, I guess. So, I know that's something we can't probably answer tonight, 'cause-
So, let's take them one at a time. It's, like, what I would do is ask for a motion to approve the track resurfacing bid, get that so that we have something on the table, discuss it, and then we can vote up or down on it.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to approve the track resurfacing bid?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, I think in my reading, there's, the first line of defense is the overages, is any kind of residual within the capital fund. And I think during the budgeting process, we were informed that there is a, there is a-
So, there's like a buffer?
There is a buffer.
Okay, good.
So, I would expect it not to affect the, it, it may affect the pace of bathroom renovation, but not with the intention of affecting the culture and the positive things that we've-
Right, I mean, I certainly wasn't, yeah, I know that, I just, I just think it's an important thing that we should make sure we try to make.
I think it's actually, some of the bathrooms that are next up for slate is some of the faculty, some of the, outside of the, the big public ones that we've, that we've been able to tackle in the last couple of years.
'Cause the ones that I've seen that have not yet been renovated, whoa.
Yeah.
It's time.
Yeah.
Like steel doors.
Yeah.
So, I, I did have a conversation with Grant about that and he didn't want to, he wanted to sort of give the board the opportunity to use residual or-
Right, right.
-to use the bathrooms and the counter, either one.
Yeah, okay, that's great, yeah.
And we are at that point that the, the track, if we don't do something, we are jeopardizing, we're back to that point where we could be jeopardizing our ability to conduct track meets here under the VPA, which then has a kind of this concussion effect.
Big effect, right. So, what you're saying, Brian, is you feel that we should definitely move forward with getting the track done, you take, accept this bid, but that, you feel that essentially, essentially we've got some monies in there where we can still keep the bathrooms moving forward, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So, that, so that, that's really, that, that, the intent of that was to address your concern, not to necessarily lobby you to my, my feelings.
Right, right.
Any other discussion?
I was gonna make the point that I realize that the surfacing cost was a little higher, but there was a significant advantage in doing that in terms of cost for price performance. It's a price performance issue and it gives us a much bigger benefit over a longer period of time. So, I did not wanna see a reduced cost, a significantly reduc, reduced performance in lifetime.
Okay.
I mean, we'll work the bathrooms out somehow.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think we can feel, and if, if there's, if there's anything that, I'll follow up on it just so that the board can feel secure, but I, I think I've represented-
Well, we could always put this in Judy's work plan too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm gonna call the question and all those in favor of approving the track resurfacing bid, as recommended, Cape and Island Tennis and Track for one hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It passes. And I think on the approval of the donation, I'm gonna ask for the same, that we have a motion to approve the donation and then we can discuss it.
Oh, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
For a second, that was, that was really nice. It's a big moment, it's a big moment.
I did read up on Robert's-
So, I think that it is, I think it's worth following up, that this is, the, the primary cost here is sixty-five Chromebooks.
Correct.
There's a good chance that it, this may have been, you know, we, I remember in our budgeting process, we actually scaled back on some Chromebooks, so-
Yes, right, yeah.
But it's a good thing for us to check into, to see if it is and where, whether it was gonna come out of operating, 'cause these are like three hundred dollars a piece-
Right.
-opposed to like our graphic art ones that are like four thousand dollars a piece.
Right.
But to see where they're coming from, my concern actually in these kinds of situations comes from the, if we didn't plan on it, then we've got sixty-five more things to care for.
Yes, yes.
So, sometimes you gotta watch out what you-
So, it might be good just to kinda look at, yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing else? What, how do these fit into the inventory?
Are we in the discussion?
Yep.
I would remind Judy that we had a discussion about a lot of our students who were in the poverty category that might make really better usage of a Chromebook and a significant, and there is a significant program offered by Comcast for nine ninety-nine a month, home delivery, high-speed internet. And that a combination of the Chromebooks along with a commitment to the educational success for these students might, that we should be investing at a higher rate in Chromebooks. And that I'd like to see the administration talk about this issue because it is a major issue for a lot of students.
Yeah, well, I think the Chromebooks are becoming a, a preferred path and not only our IT, but in many ITs because of their cost of entry and their speed and-
For the families that don't have those resources. And we have so much online now with homework, with reminders what's going on at school, with communication with teachers after school hours. I mean, it's, it's a huge advantage to help these students.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna frame something, challenge it if I've got it wrong. We've got the approval of a donation, which is uniquely the board's work and that the school actually doesn't have the authority to receive it otherwise. So, and that is great news-
Yes.
-that our STEM program won that and won it in a competitive competition. I think the other part that's interesting is for us to ask, maybe through the principal's report or through Judy and having Vince give us a sense of what does this mean?
We've already done that, I can give you a report now if you'd like.
Okay, and then the last question would be that as, maybe as we get into budgeting, we can take a look at our, some of our technology gap, some of the efforts that we could do, where we might be working towards one-to-one or other aspects of technology, so. Is that, is that a good frame, that we've got three things?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I can just give you a second for that.
Second, give me the first part of the second part.
So, you remember that at the CCSU level for the efficiencies, we have a printer as well as a copier contract. So, under our contract, we are not really allowed to accept a printer. So, that conversation happened between LeAnn Smith, the STEM Academy leader, and Vince. So, they've already looked at not being able to accept that one piece of equipment and talking about getting additional Chromebooks to replace it. So, with your next set of orgs in June, I'll list out specifically what will be purchased. We are so grateful for the Chromebooks because it really allows our, our one-to-one initiative to move forward at a rate that we hadn't imagined. And because they're such a universal device now, with minimal maintenance to them, we're, you know, arms are open by our technology department to accept them. So, students did an incredible project and LeAnn Smith, our STEM director, and hopefully can attend their meeting, did an exceptional job leading that group this year, that academy. So, you know, I really hope the board will accept us with appreciation for the work of the kiddos and, and their academy leader and we will figure out the best way to apply those, those funds.
Okay.
If we can get Comcast to serve our whole district, we'd be all set.
Well, you can't, you can't.
One step at a time.
One step at a time.
Well, if you're, or this group of students that are in a poverty situation, it's an unbelievable deal from Comcast. It's unbelievable for nine dollars and ninety-nine cents a month.
But Comcast still has to come down your road if they don't.
High-speed, and it's available for the whole family. So, it's just a matter of, of getting the Chromebook and getting it online. I, along that line, I'm not sure how many people feel, realize that all your daily homework assignments and everything are online, assigned by teacher. So, you have both your short-term and your long-term assignments and you can log into this through the parent portal. And it's by individual student and student can communicate with that specific teacher and they can set up a dialogue about how to proceed if they have questions or issues. You know, it's, it's a, it's a whole world that you may not have seen, but it's there and needs, and my judgment, and looking at it from all of my experience at IBM, it's an area that probably needs to be enhanced in the future to make it even more effective.
Yeah. Well, I, I can attest, just having two case studies, is that my eighth grader is further along in the integration of her technology in her learning than my twelfth grader.
Exactly, and that's what it's all about, you know, it's, and-
That, that might have to do a little bit with their personalities, but it's, it is right there and also as a Google school, everything is built on top of the Google framework. The Chromebook ends up being an ideal situation.
Yeah.
It's a login and the people have all their access to the network files and everything else.
It's, it's a powerful system.
Agreed. Well, I'm gonna call the, I'm gonna call the question, motion on the floor is to accept, to approve the donation to the EHS STEM Academy for twenty thousand forty-nine dollars sixty-five cents as recognition of their state, being the state winner of the 2015 Samsung Sell for Tomorrow contest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. That concludes our consent agenda. June eighth is our carousel meeting, so this is all sixteen board members gather. We'll have a singular topic to start off with and then each board will have on that same night their own meeting. I believe we're meeting tomorrow morning at seven thirty AM to talk about the carousel meeting, so whatever you are thinking about can add to my conversation tomorrow morning. Is there, I, I think obviously probably hanging out there is some kind of debriefing and understanding of what happened in the legislature.
Right, so there'll be, the overarching topics for the carousel portion of the meeting will be legislative updates and then Amy Cole and Kim Gower will be here to speak about the admin inform data collection this year, as well as our local assessment plan, the changes to that, the evolution of that plan. And then Erin McGuire speak to the MTSS framework moving forward. So, that's the overarching piece and then your principals at your local meeting will talk about updates and progress on their action plans to date, 'cause this is usually the sunset time. And they will also debrief as part of that conversation their climate survey results. So, it'll really be a results-oriented meeting where you'll start to see your local student data and, and plans forward, some of the challenges of identifying the assessments and benchmarking, but overall, knowing that we had that gap because we field-tested Sback last year, so- But overall, um knowing that we had that gap because we field tested ESback last year, so there hasn't been a lot of student data available to you, I think you'll be pleased to see the the local assessment plan results. They also will talk a little bit about overall the ESback administration and what we learned from that this year.
I have one item. This year started out with an assess- an initial assessment by the governor that we had a fifty million dollar deficit. It actually currently is a hundred and thirteen million and we have a tax plan going forward to meet that deficit. But the governor also announced this week that next year's deficit will be, will be between fifty and seventy million. So if the past year's experience is to double the number, okay, a hundred million to a hundred and forty million dollar deficit coming next year, that seems to be where we're headed based upon what we just went through. I would like to hear from our legislators, given that scenario, how this might turn out in terms of impact uh for education and uh and also how it ties in maybe with that Cadillac tax as well as more and more costs are pushed down locally. I just wanna hear some words from them because this is uh, it's getting serious and doesn't seem to be getting any better, so I'm worried, concerned about it.
Yeah, maybe um. I mean, I found that it was really a great conversation having um Tim join us.
Yeah.
I I think, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think that the 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 time sensitivity of hearing from our legislators about next year's deficit really is as we go into our budgeting process and what kind of crazy things might we see change on the horizon and looking at it through a lens of education. And Tim's great 'cause he's on that committee.
I think the sooner we have that conversation, the better. Because uh at 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 least getting some initial feedback from them based upon their experience in Montclair might give us a real clue as to what we have to watch out for.
Yep.
So Grant's currently um going to attend the Vasbo tri-state meeting and I'll be attending DSA on Thursday and Friday of this week, so there'll be an opportunity to further delve into the impact of the leg- of the legislation that was packed. And certainly have initial concerns now about the per pupil spending from a zero to five percent where where we find ourselves at the high school of not being able to grow past, you know, under two.
Right.
Like one point eight. And what that means on a per pupil basis, um, and so I think when those conversations happen, it'll be helpful to relay however they're being interpreted and the impact of that.
Yep.
Right, and and the more specific we can be about that, the better.
Yeah.
I mean, they have to really understand how it's going to impact local taxes, local schools and uh get them on board early because I I just am concerned that if we thought it was brutal this year, it's gonna be a whole lot worse. Could be a really a lot worse next year.
Um, I'd like to, uh, um, my thoughts are to have in our June meeting for the U forty six, that part of it is to have some time to talk about planning day and summit follow up. So we'll, we'll see if we can um grab a plan and and put it together at that meeting. And I think they they overlap quite a bit for even nothing else or just our time, um, so.
And then while all the boards are gathered, a red study update
Yep.
for the board members that have, that I think would be a really good thing too.
Absolutely, good call.
Mm-hmm. I don't know, there'll be two more meetings, so the financial analysis is being provided on June second.
Right.
So that's the last piece of major study information that the committee will be receiving, so this follows that.
Right after that.
It would be timely. Thank you for that.
Yeah, sure.
And I can include the board evaluation survey that you do annually in the June.
Yeah, why don't we get that out and going? That will give us, um, we've been doing the same survey for six plus years, I believe, so uh it just gives us some longitudinal data. Great. Anything else for the good of the order here? No? Uh, then I will um ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And we need a second?
Second.
Okay, and I don't believe we need a vote on that, right?
No.
So we are adjourned. Thank you very much.